The May 4, 2020 meeting of the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment will come to order. The first thing we need to do is take attendance. I'm William Koppenheffer and I am present. Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Wait, Ms. Mercer, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I was on mute.
Is anybody in the room with you?
No.
Mr. Patterson?
Present.
Anybody in the room with you?
Yes, my lovely bride.
Bill, I'm seeing something on my screen. This is for Tim. It says, "Recording is about to start." Are you having trouble?
Says, on my screen, this is Tim, on my screen it says, "You're recording." Let everyone know they're being recorded, so I don't know.
Okay.
Hopefully it's recording.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. No, thank you.
It's Linda. I see that the recording has started.
Mr. Nash?
Present.
Owen Willems.
Mr. McDonough?
I'm here by telephone, alone in the room.
Mr. Katz?
I'm here on the phone and I'm on my own.
Mr. Nula?
I'm here and I'm alone.
Who have I missed?
Mr. Perez.
Mr. Perez.
I am here. It's okay. I am here and I'm alone.
All right, great. Then we have all five members and three alternates. Mr. Corwin?
Yes.
Could you give us the RSA 91A notification, please?
Yes, these are the same comments we've been making at all of our Land Use Board meetings. So I apologize for repeating them, but we think that's necessary as long as we're meeting online, so just bear with me. My name is Tim Corwin. I am the Senior Planner with Planning Department. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Snood's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Zoning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number 12, the City of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential access, additional access by video to provide public notice of the necessary information for access in the meeting and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body, the zoning board, during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the zoning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and to participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the May 4, 2020 zoning board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, we ask that all speakers, please identify themselves first before speaking. And if it's your first time speaking, please spell your first and last name before beginning to speak, unless that is you are a member of the board, in which case we have the spelling of your name to begin with. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff, which I will do right now, until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the button on the screen. You sort of have to hover over the bottom portion of the screen to get that option. For people calling in by phone, please press *6, *6 to unmute yourself. If anyone has a problem with access during the course of the meeting, you can email me at corwin, c-o-r-w-i-n, at lebanonnh.gov. You can also try and use the chat function on Microsoft Teams. We ask that you please use the chat room for access or technical questions only. If we can provide technical assistance, if I can provide technical assistance, I will try to do so, but chances are I will not be able to do so. But it's good that we have at least a record of someone who is trying to get in and is having trouble. So it is worthwhile, please let us know, even if there's nothing I can necessarily do at the moment. If in the event that we find there are accumulating technical difficulties throughout the meeting and it becomes difficult to meet, we will adjourn the meeting and reschedule it. Finally, please note, a couple, final couple of notes. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting by roll call vote. Please know that there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it at home. We ask that you please be patient as we try and manage that delay. Again, we ask that nobody use the chat function for anything unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties, which again, there's only so much we can do about that at this moment. And then again, as we've already discussed, this meeting is being recorded and it will be available on the city's website at lebanonnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I will turn it back over to the chair. You have to unmute yourself, Bill. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Corwin. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes for April 6, 2020. Is there a motion?
Dan Nash, I'll move the approval of the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Jennifer.
Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes of April 6, starting with Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Perez?
I vote yes.
Okay. The vote is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the April 20, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion?
Dan Nash, I move, we approve the minutes of the 20 April meeting.
Is there a second?
Jonathan Perez, second. Sorry, Al.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion? Any corrections, additions, subtractions?
I have, this is Jeremy Katz. I have a couple of comments. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Yeah, so on page 5, line 12, the word reasonable, I think is supposed to be responsible. The tenant is responsible for following the rules and the zoning administrator is responsible for enforcing the conditions.
Right.
All right. And then just also on the header of the second and later pages of the minutes, it has the wrong date. It says Monday, March 2. It should say April 20.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments, additions, corrections? All right. We'll call for a vote then. Ms. Mercer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The vote is unanimous. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing in the matter of Atomab LLC and Hitchcock Clinic, 7 Lucent Drive, tax map 10, lot 11, -2600 New Hampshire Route 120, tax map 10, lot 10, Zone Light Industrial and General Commercial 1. Applicant proposes a 27,300 square foot addition, or excuse me, expansion to an existing building, a new parking lot, and other associated site improvements. In connection with the proposed construction, applicants request a special exception pursuant to Article 4, Section 401.5, Wetlands Conservation District of the zoning ordinance to allow permanent wetland impacts of approximately 7,395 square feet and temporary wetland impacts of approximately 351 square feet. Is there somebody from the applicant who is prepared to address the board? Or not?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, this is Tim Corwin. I see Kevin Warden in the engineer. I see his phone number. He's in the list. Kevin, can you press *6? Can you hear me? Can you press *6 to unmute yourself?
Hello, Board. Hello, Tim. This is Kevin Warden with Engineering Ventures.
Mr. Chair, my apologies. This is Jonathan Perez. I'm sorry, sir. I am going to, in an abundance of caution, recuse myself from sitting on this application. So you probably need to appoint an alternate.
All right, in that case.
Mr. Chairman, it's David Love. I also need to recuse myself of this case.
Well, I don't know who last sat, whether it was Mr. McDonough or Mr. Katz. Mr. Katz, you're sitting on the next case, aren't you?
Yes.
All right. Mr. McDonough, I'll appoint you to be a voting member on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So do we have an applicant, Mr. Corwin?
Yes, Mr. Warden is here. Kevin Warden.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So this is, I'll start by saying, this is Kevin Warden with Engineering Ventures, representing Atomab.
Excuse me, Kevin, would you spell your name, please?
So the project is nicely laid out in the staff comments and applications, so I'll be brief and then entertain any additional questions. But this is a proposed special exception due to impacts to wetlands resulting from a proposed addition to an existing facility at 7 Lucent Drive, which is a site of...
Mr. Warden, this is William Koppenheffer. Excuse me for a moment. Mr. Corwin, can you put up on our screen one of the plans? I suppose the first one would be the most appropriate one at this point, that was submitted by the applicant. Mr. Corwin? Oh, shoot. Mr. Corwin, can you hear?
It looks like Mr. Corwin is on mute.
All right.
Honey, I really can't talk. I'm on a meeting. Sorry. It's a public meeting with a bunch of people.
Mr. Corwin, are you able to put up on our screen a copy of the plan submitted by the applicant?
Let me, let me try. Hold on a second. Which sheet?
Mr. Warden, which sheet?
I'll do, how about EX1?
C10 or C2.1?
I would recommend C2.1. Or actually, probably, probably the one before. Probably EX.1 would be the easiest. And Tim, I've attempted to join Teams. I'm now calling in by phone. I don't seem to have been led into Teams. If I was, I could see what everyone else is seeing, or I'll just participate by phone. That's fine, too.
Yeah, I just, I'm not seeing where it is that I can let anybody in. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I'll just continue by phone then. So the, so as I was saying, and you can see on the plan here where it's labeled "Building," FFE 800.08. That is the existing Atomab building. And Atomab is a technology company that has been doing quite well since it originally started in the DRTC incubator space in Centerra. Moved into this building, renovated and expanded in this building, and now needs to expand again. Unfortunately, the lot that they're on is fully built out, so they've done a boundary line adjustment, which has been reviewed and approved by the planning board to take a certain amount of adjacent land from Lot 1010. That lot has, a portion of the lot is covered by wetlands, which Cindy Bolshus from Stony Ridge Environmental has delineated and reviewed the functions. Those wetlands on this plan, EX.1, are labeled as PF04/1E. And the proposed improvements include an addition, which is located at the southwest corner of the existing building and a new parking lot. Parking lot is located on uplands principally, non-wetland areas. But to get to the parking lot, a drive comes from the end of Lucent Drive and crosses a section of wetland. So the impacts are listed on the plan. There's seven of them. There's the one for the drive crossing, number one. Number two is a small corner for the parking lot. Number three is a small little section that extends on where the parking lot covers it. Number four is due to a walkway which connects the parking lot to the proposed addition. Five, again, is a small sliver due to the side fill from the parking lot. Six is the wetland impact due to the addition. And seven is a temporary impact to run a utility line, in this case, a roof drain, under the wetland and then replace the wetland soil to the pre-existing grades and condition. As the report from Cindy Bolshus states, there are two functions to the wetland. Minor function of management. There's not a lot of watershed going to this area. It's predominantly from uphill development in Centerra. And the stormwater management proposed with the development will return flows to pre-existing conditions, or pre-existing rates, by treating stormwater from the parking lot in the central island through a filter media and then slowing down the water in underground chambers before it's discharged. In addition, where the drive is, a culvert will be placed under that sized appropriately to let flow from one side of the wetland to the other. And the other function was wildlife habitat. Since we're on the edge of a forested area, it's kind of a minimal function, but it will be kind of mitigated by the amount of trees that are planted around the perimeter of the parking lot and then those retained in the wetland area. And so we've been to the Conservation Commission, which I believe you have the meeting minutes from. And the Conservation Commission did move to recommend approval with a few conditions, including looking at an expanded pipe under the entry drive and one that would allow migration of small animals through it, so they didn't have to cross the drive. And that's all I have to present, but I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Ms. Mercer, do you have any questions, comments?
I do not have any questions or comments at this time.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, sir. I actually have a couple of questions. And first, is this addition staffing, is this going to increase the staff population of that, of the hospital?
Yes, so this is unrelated. Getting some feedback. Sorry if that's affecting you.
You're unrelated to the hospital, like you said?
Correct, yeah. This is a R&amp;D facility that is, the reason it lists the hospital is the land that has been added to the 7 Lucent parcel. It's a boundary line adjustment that has been purchased from the hospital.
Oh, okay, so you're not...
From the hospital.
Okay, so my question was then going to go to, because I know that some of the hospital is tax exempt, if not most of it, and that was, obviously you don't fall into that category, so.
Correct, correct. And there will be an employee expansion. The planned total expansion is up to 40 new employees.
Okay, I have no, I have no other questions, and you answered that with the first two. Thank you.
Mr. McDonough, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nash?
I thought the application and the Conservation Commission covered everything adequately, so I have no questions.
Mr. Katz?
No questions.
All right. I have no questions. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? Either in favor of or against the proposal, or has any questions regarding the proposal? Mr. Corwin, does it look like we have anybody on the line?
There are a number of phone numbers. It's hard, there's a number of phone numbers. It's hard to know who is who. So if anyone, if anyone would like to comment on the application again, press *6 and we'll be able to hear you. But in the meantime, I did neglect to mention in my opening statement that the public hearing tonight will be continued to a special meeting of the zoning board to be held on Tuesday, not Monday, Tuesday, May 19, at 7:00 PM. This will allow for additional public testimony in the event that anyone is unable to access the meeting tonight. Any such questions or comments, we'd ask ideally to be, please send those to planning@lebanonnh.gov, to email those comments to planning@lebanonnh.gov. Again, preferably by the end of the day on Monday, let me just grab the date here. End of the day on Monday, May 11, if possible. And and if you, for any additional information about that, please call the Planning and Development Department at 603-448-1457.
All right, hearing, or rather, not hearing from anybody from the public, then would any, is there a motion from the board to continue this hearing to Tuesday, May 19?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Patterson?
I'll make a motion to continue the meeting.
All right. Is there a second?
Dan Nash, I'll second it.
All right. Ms. Mercer, what, is there any discussion on this? Ms. Mercer?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
I vote in favor to continue this matter.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned until May 19.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, did you have a comment, Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, just not really a comment. I just wanted to give you a heads up and for staff, on the 19th, I have a conflict. So in the interest of giving plenty of notice, I just wanted to let you know. That's all.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is deliberation, continued from April 20, 2020, in the matter of EM and EE Bovere, Sr., co-trustees, 237 Hanover Street Extension, Tax Map 64, Lot 2, Zoned R3. Applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 702.1, to permit a change from one non-conforming use vehicular repair to another non-conforming use, storage and recycling facility. At the end of the meeting on April 20, Mr. Nash agreed to draft a motion in favor of the applicant and Mr. Katz agreed to draft a motion against the applicant. So...
Mr. Chair, this is Tim. Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
Al, I know you've recused yourself, so just so that there's no confusion when anybody's watching this, you might want to turn off your video, because right now you're the, you're the most prominent thing on the screen right now, Al. Whereas you've recused yourself, so I just don't want, I just don't want anyone to be confused by that if they re-watch the video. Thanks.
All right, so I think the most expeditious way of proceeding is to have one of the motions read, see if it gets a second, discuss that, and go from there. So, Mr. Nash, you drafted a motion in favor of the applicant. Would you like to read that motion into the record?
Certainly. On March 2, 2020, April 6, 2020, and April 20, 2020, duly noticed, Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment, there appeared Eugene Bovere, Jr. And on April 20, 2020, there appeared Nortis Waste Services LLC regarding 37 Hanover Street Extension, Tax Map 64, Lot 2, Zoned R3, requesting a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 702.1, to permit a change from one non-conforming use vehicular repair to another non-conforming use, storage and recycling facility. It's a fact. I need to read those, or are those already distributed, Tim?
Staff received both draft motions prior to the meeting and forwarded directly from the members who drafted those motions. And staff forwarded the draft motions to the Board members for their review prior to, prior to tonight's meeting. No discussion of those motions took place. It was simply a matter of preparing the draft and distributing to the members for the review prior to the meeting. I also wanted to point out that I was, the applicant required... I also wanted to point out that I was, the applicant requested a copy of the draft motions, and so I sent, I did send those to Mr. Bovair sometime last week.
Okay, so findings of fact.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
This is the chairman, I think we can, as we usually do, dispense with the reading of the findings of fact, and if there are corrections or additions, then members of the board will make that known.
Okay, so findings of fact, there are nine in the draft decision, going on to conclusions of law. As a result of the above findings of fact, and based on testimony given, application materials presented and supporting documents submitted, the board concludes the following with respect to the special exception criteria set forth in the NATO one-three of the zoning ordinance. One, the special exception is specifically authorized by seven oh two one of the zoning ordinance. Two, the following conditions requirement is met. Quote, "The proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use," close quote. The analysis starts by investigating the current and proposed uses. The current use includes vehicle repairs all day long with pneumatic tools, customer traffic in and out all day long, parts deliveries, lot full to limit with vehicles to be worked on, and rental and sales. The proposed use, storage and recycling facility, can be summarized as follows: receiving, processing, and dispatching recyclable waste materials as a light industry use, storing new or clean waste containers as warehouse use, storing metal dumpsters and vehicles outside behind a stockade fence as a contractor yard use. In this specific case, the board finds that the proposed use vehicles and uses would largely be absent all day long. The vehicles fire up and leave to serve customers. Trash collected is disposed of prior to returning to home. Recyclables are returned to the shop, reporting a minimal part of the work and work week. Food waste containers will be brought back to the shop for washing and reuse. Stored containers, parents for future customers, will be stored behind a stockade fence. Recycled metal will be stored in the same secured area and screened, both secured from public access. We therefore find that the proposed use is equally appropriate. Three, there are no existing violations of the zoning ordinance on the property that the granting the special exception would not remedy. The board notes that several abutters alleged that the property was already being operated as the proposed use in violation of the zoning ordinance. These allegations described onsite activity and not onsite operations. Nothing prohibits the owner from performing showings with his prospective tenant, clearing out prior tenant belongings, or performing routine onsite maintenance, all actions that reasonably describe the activity testified to by the abutters. Or, the character of the area will not be adversely affected. The operations will largely be offsite, there will be fewer vehicles stored onsite, and much less customer traffic. Five, a hazard or nuisance will not be created. Early hour truck traffic will be limited to three large vehicles, moving once to travel to customer sites. Recycling and storage facilities will be conducted inside enclosed facilities. Trash collected will be disposed of at licensed facilities before returning to this location. Six, the capacity of existing or planned community facilities and services, including streets and highways, will not be adversely impacted. The granting of a special exception will not reduce, result in undue municipal expense. The board notes, however, that granting a special exception with a long list of compliance conditions could create an undue municipal burden by placing an ongoing task of compliance verification on the city. Eight, the proposed special exception will be developed in a manner compatible with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. The proposed use will be equally appropriate and be largely offsite. Nine, the general welfare of the city will be protected. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment on this fourth day of May, twenty twenty, hereby grants the requested special exception set forth above, and per testimony plans and materials submitted, for the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain a building permit and a certificate of occupancy, shall pay an impact fee pursuant to two thirteen of the zoning ordinance, and shall comply with all applicable local, state, federal regulations in the use of the property. Two, the applicant shall obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the proposed use, prior to commencing any onsite uses. Three, the applicant shall prepare and submit a boundary survey, prepared by a licensed to him, to the planning office. Markers clearly depicting the property line shall be installed. The purpose of this condition is to ensure the vehicles are parked in the subject parcel and not in the public way. Four, the applicant shall erect an eight-foot-high stockade fence opaque around the outdoor storage area. Equipment, dumpsters, and other materials that do fit inside, that should be, do not fit inside the building, shall be stored in this area. The area shall be secured at all times to prevent unauthorized access. Five, the applicant shall obtain an industrial discharge permit for food container and vehicle washing. In no case shall any wash water be allowed to discharge to the city's surface drainage system. Six, applicant shall not allow overnight storage of trash, food waste, or any other type of organic waste to be stored at the facility. That's ready for a second.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion, Mrs. Jennifer.
All right, for this hearing, Mr. McDonough and Mr. Katz are, are the members that will continue to be voting members on this decision. I would like, I, I at our last hearing, I said that I agreed with Mr. Nash that, subject to certain conditions, that this application could be approved. And I, I think that the conditions that Mr. Nash has suggested do not go far enough in addressing the concerns of the neighbors, as well as what I think should be the concerns of the city. And, and let me just give you a couple of examples of, of these. Recyclables, the applicant has indicated in Mr. Bovair's letter of April thirteenth, would be inside until they were of sufficient size to be disposed of. That should be a condition. Nordic Waste has made the representation that would, there would be no roll-off dumpster services here, that should be a condition. The hours that Nordic Waste wants to operate, which is six thirty AM to four o'clock PM, which I don't have any problem with, I think that needs to be imposed as a condition. Nordic Waste has stated that it's not going to be open to the public to drop off trash or recycling, and there won't be customer traffic in and out, and I think that needs to be a condition. Nordic Waste has said that there would be no more than six trucks maximum utilizing the premises, I think that needs to be a condition. They said that there would be no more than ten employees maximum, and I think that should be a condition. And they also represented that scrap metal is going to be outside in a container, and I think that should be a condition. Having said all of that, I, I think that Mr. Nash is correct in pointing out that uh, let, let, let me when he says that too many conditions can impose a burden upon the city, and I agree with him. I think if we need to impose all of the conditions that I cited, and I think all of those conditions have been alluded to in one way or another by the neighbors as concerns, that what we come to is, is a question of, if you need that many conditions, is this a usage that should be permitted in this area? And I think the only conclusion that I can come to is, no, because I think if, if you give it a little bit of thought, enforcing those conditions is going to impose a possibly intolerable burden on the city, it's going to result in frustrations from the neighbors, and I think it's going to be a generally unsatisfactory situation. And so, even though two weeks ago I said that I could support this application with conditions, the more I thought about it, the more I, I am ready to conclude that if we need that many conditions, then this is not a suitable project for this neighborhood, and so I will be voting against this motion. Ms. Mercer, you're next on my list, how do you feel about the motion?
I have a couple of proposed changes to the motion that I would like to list for Mr. Nash. First is in findings of fact, let me just make sure, yeah, findings of fact, number nine, E, the last one there. The second sentence states that trucks parked on the premises will be started and reversed at early morning times when people in single-family homes may be sleeping, et cetera. I don't, I think that the words "and reversed" should actually be removed, because there was no testimony from the applicant about that, and I will propose a condition here in a minute, which would address that, but that's sort of speculative on this abutters or neighbor's testimony, and I think could be are, you know, argued in, in any kind of court or follow-on proceedings, so I think that the words "and reversed" should be removed from that. Moving down, though, under the conditions, condition number five, I would propose that the first sentence reads, "The applicant shall obtain an industrial discharge permit for food, trash, and recycling containers in vehicle washing," because they do have other containers besides just food waste containers. And then I would add two more conditions, I think some of these get at what Mr. Koppenheffer was stating, so number seven would be that trucks are required to be backed in and parked at the end of the workday, so that they won't be backing up in early morning hours or during school drop-off, they'll be able to drive straight out. And then I, I agree that there should be a condition that outlines what the applicant said in terms of the hours of operation, and the size of the business, numbers of employees, and numbers of vehicles, so the operating hours, no more than ten employees working on site, and no more than six commercial vehicles at the location, would be my, my suggestion, so I, I could support this with those conditions and changes.
Mr. Katz?
So, so a few comments, I'm, I'm opposed to this proposal, but just to add a couple of specific pieces of information, on the finding of facts in Section nine D, where there's a, a safety issue found, I have a hard time making a legal conclusion that upon making a finding of fact that there's a safety issue created, this use is equal or more appropriate than the prior use. If you move to nine E, just responding to Ms. Mercer, my recollection was that Tim Brusso actually testified in the most recent hearing about trucks reversing, and you're potentially reversing and beeping loudly at six forty-five in the morning when neighbors could be sleeping as being a, a specific concern, I agree that, that could be mitigated by making them not able to reverse at that time, but I do believe that's in the record. And then additionally, in the conclusions of law, in the Section two of conclusions of law, the three lines discussing the existing use, current use all day long with pneumatic tools, with frequent traffic in and out, and frequent parts deliveries, is not something that I believe is found in the record. You know, certainly there was an auto repair shop there in the past two years, and there was discussion about the auto repair shop and the manner in which it worked, but I don't recall any discussion of pneumatic tools or frequent deliveries of, of, of any sort. And also, the description of the, the lot that was full of vehicles was not described in my recollection as a lot that was full of vehicles, because they were being actively worked on it. The description was kind of like that it was almost an ad hoc junkyard that managed to accrue without being worked on. And then if you go into, in Section two, the last large paragraph that says, "In this specific case, the board finds that the proposed use vehicles and uses would largely be absent all day long," I think that the proposed use is there all day long, whether the people are there or not, and, you know, there could be people there, there could be people not, but if you have a large metal dumpster outside that's collecting junk until there's enough to take it away, that is a use that is physically on-site all day long, and that is, you know, in my opinion, an industrial use. And then if going down to Paragraph four, on the character of the area not being adversely affected, there's a comment that says there will be fewer vehicles stored on-site and much less customer traffic, and again, I just don't feel that that's a legal conclusion that can be made based on the record that's developed and found in the findings of fact, and those are my comments on why I'm against that.
Mr. McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am not in favor of granting the petition. It seems to me that the proposed non-conforming use is not equally or more appropriate than the existing non-conforming use, and I echo your statement that there's no condition or combination of conditions that would be not cumbersome, that would render this application and this use appropriate, and therefore I vote against the petition.
Mr. Nash?
As far as the the conditions of the site, I put those in there from my experience, I, I've lived in town and observed that operation, and those characteristics were from my own observations. Also, the lot full to the limit of vehicles was by the, one of the exhibits we saw that were part of the application, that was an aerial photograph that showed it full of vehicles. So those, those facts, even though they weren't testified to, they were my own experience, so that makes them invalid, so be it, but I would support the motion.
Mr. Newlove?
Yeah, I have a few comments, Mr. Chairman. When I look on Section and three oh five point two, the table of uses for general commercial district, I see on twenty-seven, a service station and twenty-eight vehicle, vehicular repair shop. And then when I go to Section three oh four point two, heavy industrial district, I see listed there recycling facility, which makes me believe that this is a different use. We're going from a car repair to a heavy industry, so I would support Jeremy Katz's denial of the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perez?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm not voting on this application. I, when I reviewed the two motions, I actually had made an observation similar to yours, Mr. Chair, at the beginning of this deliberation, which is, it seemed to me that in light of the industrial-type use, we would be required to we would be required to include a significant amount of additional conditions to ensure the community's interests and, and adherence to the standards for granting the special exception. I, while I would not personally be opposed to including those conditions, I understand from Mr. Corwin and yourself that, that in general imposing conditions of that nature are not considered to be in the public interest, that's my words, not yours, due to the fact that enforceability becomes a, a significant issue. And so reluctantly, I would, I would follow the lead that you established, Chairman Kopp and Heffer, at the beginning of that discussion.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from members of the board? All right. We'll call the vote then. Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
No.
Mr. Katz?
No.
And I vote no. The motion does not carry. Mr. Katz, you made a motion opposing the application. Would you like to read that at this point, please?
Yes. On March 2nd, 2020, April 6th, 2020, and April 20th, 2020, at duly noticed meetings of the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment, there appeared Eugene Bovare Jr., and on April 20th, 2020, there appeared Joshua Dickey of Nordic Waste Services LLC regarding 237 Hanover Street Extension, tax map 64 of Lot 2, Zoned R3, requesting a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 702.1, to permit a change from one non-conforming use, vehicular repair, to another non-conforming use, storage and recycling facility, number ZB 2020-07-SE. There are finding of facts, of which there are nine. I won't read them all in line with the prior presentation, although I will note that, other than a couple of words here and there, substantially the finding of facts in both motions were, were nearly identical. And upon those, based on those finding of facts, section two conclusions of law, as a result of the above finding of facts and based on testimony given, application materials presented, and supporting documents submitted, the board concludes the following with respect to the special exception criteria set forth in 801.3 of the zoning ordinance. One, the special exception is specifically authorized by 702.1 of the zoning ordinance, 801.3A. Two, the following requirement condition of 702.1 is not met. The proposed use is equally appropriate or more appropriate to the district than the existing non-conforming use, 801.3B. The analysis starts by investigating the current and proposed uses in relation to the ordinance and the applicable zoning ordinance use table. The prior use of vehicular repair is a use that presently is allowed only in the general commercial zone. The proposed use, storage and recycling facility, does not exist in the ordinance. However, the relevant components can be summarized as follows. Receiving, processing, and dispatching recyclable waste materials is a light industry use. Storing new or clean waste containers is a warehouse use. Storing metal dumpsters and vehicles behind, outside behind a stockade fence is a contractor yard use. These uses, individually and in the aggregate, are all uses in the ordinance that the ordinance contemplates as being appropriate for the light industrial district. In this specific case, the board finds that the aggregation of multiple light industrial uses into a regional hub for an industrial activity replacing a single transaction-oriented commercial use, combined with the early morning hours of operation and the introduction of potential hazards to pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle traffic, make the proposed use less appropriate to the district. This decision is made based on the proposed use, not the proposed user. The board has substantial sympathy for the applicant, who is looking to make profitable use of his land, and for the prospective tenant who seeks to provide an important service in the community. With the facts and testimony presented, it is the creation of this type of industrial use, a light industrial use that will run with the land and be capable of turning into additional industrial uses in the future that are then equally or less appropriate than the proposed use, that the board, less inappropriate it should be, than the proposed use, that the board finds objectionable and less appropriate. Three, there are no existing violations to the zoning ordinance on the property that the granting of the special exception would not remedy. The board notes that several abutters alleged that the property was already being operated as the proposed use in violation of the zoning ordinance. These allegations described onsite activity and not onsite operations. Nothing prohibits the owner from performing showings with his prospective tenant, clearing out prior tenant belongings, or performing routine onsite maintenance, all actions that reasonably describe the activity testified to by the abutters. Four, the character of the area will be adversely affected, 801.3D. The district is an R3 district intended for the creation of small neighborhoods composed of single-family homes. For the reason above, the introduction, for the reasons above, the introduction of multiple industrial uses, both outdoor and indoor, will adversely affect the primary residential character of the district. While the abutters have no right to deprive the applicant of his lawfully vested pre-existing non-conforming use, they have clear rights to object to the conversion to a new industrial use that is more inappropriate to the zone than the pre-existing use. Five, a hazard or nuisance will be created, 801.3E. Early-hour truck beeping, truck traffic during core school drop-off and pickup times, and truck activity in heavily walked and biked area will introduce hazards that previously did not exist. Unlike other industrial, industrial properties, the trucks in this location will not have a turning radius on this property to be able to avoid having to back out into the street, at least from the indoor bays where they are anticipated to be kept overnight. Six, the capacity of existing or planned communities, facilities, and services, including streets and highways, will not be adversely impacted, 801.3F. Seven, the granting of the special exception will not result in undue municipal expense. The board notes, however, that granting a special exception with a long list of compliance conditions would create an undue municipal expense in placing an ongoing burden of compliance verification upon the city. Eight, the proposed special exception will not be developed in a manner compatible with the spirit and intent of the ordinance, 801.3H. For the reasons above, the district is a R3 district intended to be single-family. The applicant has the protected right to continue its lawfully non-conforming use or convert it to one that will be equal or less inappropriate for the zone. The proposed use moves directionally away from the intent of the ordinance. Nine, the general welfare of the city will not be protected. The issuance of the requested special exception will not lessen congestion in the streets or promote the safe and efficient movement of people or promote the health and general welfare of the community. Decision, now therefore be it resolved, the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment on this fourth day of May 2020 hereby denies the requested special exception.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second the motion. My name is, it's Paula McDonough.
Is there, well, let me go through the roll call list, and you can make your comments as I call upon you. Ms. Mercer?
My only comment is again on finding of facts, number nine E. While the abutter certainly stated that it's still speculation on the abutter's part and not really a fact, it's just speculation. That's my only comment.
Mr., Mr. McDonough?
If you're just looking for comments, I have no further comments until we vote.
Mr. Nash?
No further comments.
Mr. Nulov?
No further comments.
Mr. Perez?
No further comments, thank you.
I have no further comments. With that, Ms. Mercer, how do you vote on this motion?
I vote no.
Mr. McDonough, how do you vote on this motion?
I vote yes.
Mr. Nash, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Mr. Katz?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries three to two. Oh, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Nash and to Mr. Katz for drafting those motions. I thought both of you did an excellent job. Thank you. The next item on our agenda are staff comments. Do we have any staff comments, Mr. Corwin?
I just wanted to apologize for any technical difficulties we had tonight. I'll try and figure out how to make it go a little bit smoother next time. And, and again, reminder that we have a special meeting on May 18th. Noted that Mr. Patterson is unavailable. If anyone else is or becomes unavailable, please, please let us know. We will continue the hearing on the Seven Lucent Drive wetlands application, and I believe we will have one other new application on the agenda for that evening.
All right. For the board's consideration, the, the other item for that may come before us on, what date are we talking about? May 18th involves intrusion on a, on a wetland. And the language of the ordinance says that where that occurs, we will give notification to the Conservation Commission. We have almost always asked the Conservation Commission for their opinion regarding the intrusion upon a wetland. In this particular case, and Mr. Corwin, please correct me if I'm, if I misstate anything here. We're talking about an intrusion, a further intrusion of five feet in, what kind of wetland is it?
Yep, in, into the wetland buffer. So the, the, there's a 100-foot wetland buffer that extends from wetlands that the city has identified as being of high or very high value. This is an existing sunroom off of a single-family dwelling that's already located within the buffer, but not, I, I think it's about at least 70 to 80 feet from the wetland, the actual wetland itself. The sun, sunroom is proposed to be replaced with a slightly larger sunroom that will extend five feet closer to the wetland than the existing deck. All in all, it's, I, I think in Stasiu, a relatively a pretty minor encroachment into the wetland buffer. And rather than hold this applicant up potentially until mid-July, if, if we're still meeting on, on, online, to, to run it by the Conservation Commission Chair for, for his comments, and then bring it to you for a decision, for, for consideration at least on, on May 19th.
I don't have anything further to add to that. Is there anything further, Mr. Corwin?
No, thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't mean to extend the meeting, but I did want to make one announcement to the, to the board.
Oh, yes.
So.
Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have accepted employment in California, and at some point will be relocating to California while keeping our home in New Hampshire as a second home for the time being. But I start with my new employer on May 18th. And of course, the time that we start these meetings is technically within business hours in California. And I've had the privilege of serving with all of you, including with, with a very capable set of alternates. And so I'm going to suggest that while I will try to attend the meeting on the 20th, and as long as I am around before I move, that, that the board begin making preparations for someone to take my permanent position. That's my announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. I'd like to say good luck in California, but why you would want to move out of God's country is beyond us.
It's a fair comment, fair comment.
Is, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, it's Mr. Patterson.
Dan Nash seconds.
Are there any objections? Then we'll consider it unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.